Good evening. Today is Monday, June 7th. Today is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. I would like to open the meeting. Can I get a motion? Cynthia, second, Lori, all in favor? Okay, so we are going to go into executive session. So can I get a motion to go into executive session? Cynthia first, Lori second, all in favor? Great, we'll be back at 7:30 for our special meeting. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Today is Monday, June 7th, 2021. This is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. This meeting has actually already been opened up. We opened it at 6:00. Well, Laura did for me, because I was late. And then we went to executive session. We just came out of executive session, so the meeting is already open. Let's start out with the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the law which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Well, let's get right into it. Today's presentation is going to be our year in review and COVID-19 honorees, which is really exciting. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Goodman.
Yes. Good evening, colleagues. Good evening, School Board, and good evening to the community watching from home. This evening, we will first review the 2021 school year, and then we will highlight the accomplishments of the past 10 months, review our movement towards our strategic plan goal, and again, recognize our stakeholders who achieved, helped us during this really tough time achieve our mission and bring all students back into our school district. This was a year like none other. We were the first to close, and we were the first to open. We were first closed when we were in the containment zone, and we were designated with new Rochelle. And we were the first to open, believe it or not, just not even a year ago in July, when we offered the first in-person special education program. We also offered that summer, which July is the start of the school year, a summer support program. We opened our doors to all students in K-3 and continuously expanded our in-district offerings for students as the year progressed. And we did this with the work of our health and wellness team. They helped us on all the decisions that we made, and we will recognize them later this evening. In other years, the value of being in-person for education would just be assumed and taken for granted. No longer. We worked diligently to provide the services to our students and community. It entailed scrutinizing regulations and developing new structures. Among the new structures we developed, just over the summer, really, was block schedule, new classroom redesigns, desk shields as time went on, no desk shields as time went on, outdoor learning spaces, new materials to supplement, shared handheld devices, software for remote learning, digital presentations and increased differentiation, hardware for video capture, assessment and student learning, expanded our one-to-one initiative, and redesigned our gyms, auditoriums and cafeterias. All this was done with the express interest in providing our students with safe and equitable access to learning. Digital equity meant our technology department responded quickly to concerns and that we work around logistical barriers like supply chain breakdowns due to the pandemic. We provided families in need with hotspots so they could access Internet and worked one-on-one with families in troubleshooting faulty connections and unresponsive devices. This year required transformations, but the main drivers were student welfare, education and service to our community. We kept advancing our mission. This year required cutting-edge differentiation, the leveraging of instructional technology and the implementation of responsive systems to address potential learning loss. All the while, there was focus on the whole child. Social emotional wellness weighed heavily on decision-making and curriculum planning. Physical health was factored into decisions to redesign spaces and bring students back. These conversations and learning experiences will benefit us in the years to come. Meanwhile, we continued making strides towards our strategic plan. Many of our initiatives required in-depth professional development and active participation and reflection on behalf of our teachers and leaders. As we will discuss in our upcoming slides, we felt it necessary to advance our mission rather than pause. Tocco is leading the way, and we are doing that with a team of administrators and teachers and staff unwilling to compromise on what makes Tocco special, no matter pandemic and no matter what challenges. Let's begin by reviewing our strategic plan. While this was the focus of our presentation earlier this year, I will review the framework and goals before diving into our progress. We are driven by academics and our goal to enhance performance for long-term success, whether in college, career and citizenship. We know we can only do this by building upon strong relationships between the district, the students and the community and that this work requires us to uphold our fiduciary responsibility to ensure fiscal responsibility and long-term sustainability. The mission and these specific goals can be illustrated by this year's budget process, one built on collaboration and transparency with an eye toward the future and student success. Preparing students for success requires a plan. We have built this plan on the four pillars that you've seen before: social emotional learning, meeting the diverse needs of learners, contemporary teaching and learning and professional learning. In previous presentations, we have distilled these into smaller goals aligned with measurable outcomes and artifacts. Tonight, we will update you on some of these accomplishments. Pillar one, social emotional learning. To support our strategic plan's goals around social emotional learning, our district hosted parent presentations. This included webinars to help families during the reopening process, a presentation from our behaviorist on behavior-based strategies for parents and a virtual walkthrough of our social emotional curriculum with rethink education. Additionally, we have hosted teachers workshops, reinforcing the needs for flexibility and sensitivity in the wake of the pandemic and providing our staff with skills, tools and resources to address the needs of our students. There have been push-in SEL lessons, health education at both the elementary and middle school levels focused on that and the launch of our TIGR program, our intervention program in the high school. This year, social emotional learning took on new meaning. We responded to the needs of the time but also developed a foundation for continued success in the years to come. Pillar two, diverse needs of learners. In meeting the diverse needs of learners, our district has moved forward with implementing iReady. While this was part of a small pilot in the beginning of the year, we have expanded the pilot and have used it as a tool for learners striving and those who are thriving. This year, the elementary school created a diversity club that reminded students of the importance and value of the community's diversity. And a committee of stakeholders have unpacked the culturally responsive sustaining education framework and the state's diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. Throughout the year, we have looked closely at math cohesion and the bridge between different schools. After reviewing the data, we are moving forward with a more unified curriculum in grades K to 7 with an accelerated and more challenging seventh grade sequence. Recognizing that we are increasing the rigor, next year's budget allows for additional staffing to help meet the needs of students who require additional support while also providing enhancements and enrichment for students seeking challenges. Pillar three is contemporary teaching and learning. This year, we have made leaps and bounds in contemporary teaching and learning. Confronted with the requirements of digitizing materials and offering instruction virtually, our teachers have risen to the task. We have hosted throughout the years training and direct coaching on instructional technology. We also launched new programs in early literacy and science despite the obstacles of the pandemic. We look forward to see these continue to flourish as classes are reunited. Next year, we will be expanding foundations to grade 3 and science 21 to grades 4 and 5. We also launched a training and project-based learning with a cohort of secondary teachers. Teachers developed what PBL Works calls gold standard projects, research-informed units that allow for sustained inquiry, authenticity, student voice, reflection, revision, questioning and presentation. Looking ahead, we want to seize on more authentic learning opportunities, allowing students to see the real-world connections in what they are learning and doing in the classroom. Lastly, for professional learning, our goal was to both support our staff in responding to the unprecedented challenges of the year and to push our district forward in its bold vision. Our asynchronous learning days were critical in both of these. They permitted not only the opportunity to respond to the needs of hybrid instruction and digital lesson design, but to look ahead in terms of curriculum review, lesson development and cross-grade collaboration. This year, we engaged in training on data collection tools, seeing the value of increasing the data literacy of our professional learning communities. We expect this to enhance our response to intervention program and to allow us to provide students with appropriate challenges and enrichment activities. Lastly, we leveraged technology for hybrid, remote and responsive training experiences. This year permitted us to use technology to develop rich professional development experience focused on continuous improvement. Now, the accomplishments of this year and the movement toward our strategic goals would not be possible if it was not for some of the people we recognize tonight. So first, we want to thank the teachers for their effort this year. Jean Whalen, president of the Tocco Teachers Association, Kelly Donovan, vice president of the Tocco Teachers Association, and Rebecca Chaffee-Cottrell, building representative of the Tocco Teachers Association, are here tonight to represent our dedicated and talented teaching staff. And here's just some of the many things. I could really write 100 things we did. But first, we shifted from in-person to remote to hybrid and back to in-person, remote and hybrid throughout the year. We created welcoming, safe environments for our students. Our teachers assumed so many leadership roles. They also participated in so many committees. And just so that the community knows, the committees didn't always happen during school time. We met at night, we met after school. Some of the representatives from the TTA continue over the weekend. We were very busy making sure that we were ready and always stayed ready with all the new changes. Our teachers adapted to new schedules and spaces. They dived into new initiatives and curricular, and they changed classrooms. Many teachers are not in the classroom that they were in before. They had these new learning spaces, and even some were working in cafeterias while some were projecting from one classroom to another. Teacher schedules were quickly adjusted in the high school and middle school, block schedules, you know, that takes years to usually design. We just designed it over the summer. And teachers were with students on extended mask breaks outside. They became so adept at using all types of technology. From the first day of school, we had four days. Remember, if you can remember, back to then, we used our superintendent's conference days at the beginning of the year, and they pretty much had four days to learn everything. And also, in this time, learning the safety procedures, which changed a number of times throughout the year, understanding contact tracing, understanding what it meant to be a contact, sometimes teaching from home if they were quarantined. Some teachers were and are having time to do their work in cubbies. They learned how to use microphones and teaching through masks, not easy. Try teaching reading through masks. They spoke over, they taught over desk dividers, and they taught students when they were home, when they had students in their class. And the main thing I have to say about our teachers is they did not let fear overcome them. For everybody, it was a nerve-wracking time, and at times, people were confused, but they always pulled themselves up for the betterment of our students. And as we move away from the year, I hope it is not forgotten that teachers were out front long before vaccinations and the science indicating the effectiveness of certain mitigation measures. And you know, that also changed over time. The Tocco teachers were driven by devotion and commitment to their students and their craft. Formal and informal observations have revealed their flexibility and responsiveness of our teaching staff. We thank them tonight and will be forever grateful for their dedication this year. Ms. Whalen, Ms. Donovan and Ms. Chaffee, please come to Ms. Dunn to accept our certificate of appreciation on behalf of the TTA. Also, if you could please pause for a brief, for a quick photo, because you know I have to put this up on Facebook. And let's give them a hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just, without any words, thank you all of you for the support, everything that you've done. There were difficult moments, and thank you so much for your words because they said a really beautiful job of everything that we've been through this year. And I'm so proud of us as a community, as a team, as a district, as a board, and all of my teachers, so incredibly proud of them. So thank you so very much for this.
Next, we thank the Tocco administrators. We want to really recognize what they have done. Because we started the year with a vacationless summer. Actually, it really was weekends, nights, the whole summer was. When I say vacationless, I mean not a day off. And the summer was complete with moving trucks, storage units, tape measures and pages and pages of regulations and health guidance. They had to be expert in contact tracing, leading change, developing schedules, serving on committees, adapting to restrictions, having meetings with groups of parents all throughout the day and night. If you recall, we did have a 10:00 PM meeting so that parents could hop on. Administrators were there. They had lead teachers who might have been anxious about the pandemic, and they had to be upfront and be available all the time, and they were. I actually thanked them because I think if you looked at their phone, you would probably see how much I actually interacted with them over the summer. And the three feet, the six feet, the barriers, they were all part of that. We are aware of the sacrifices they made this year and also the nights and weekends, not just planning, but contact tracing. As soon as we had a contact, a positive case in the school, they started. And if you recall, it used to be, you know, many more people we had to call at that time. They had to deal with nervous parents, explaining this to teachers. And again, we had to get this all done in a certain amount of time so we could get the information out to the entire school community. They helped prepare for change after change, and I appreciate their leadership in a time of a crisis. Dr. Linehan and who's coming up with you? Dr. Marash and Mr. Kilgallen, please collect the certificate demonstrating our appreciation for your efforts. Come for the picture.
I'd like to echo Jean's words. It's been an incredible year and thank the board for their support. Dr. Goodman, and I can't thank the people enough. I mean, you know, we work together hand in hand. CSCE, again, you know, everybody's just been fantastic. We met the challenge, and we're challenged in the future, but I want to thank everybody for their support. Thank you.
And the next group we would like to thank is the CSCE. Despite, and this is the custodians, the office staff, the business office, the security guards, monitors, teaching aides and teacher assistants. So despite being confronted with the obstacles and brand-new systems, Tocco's operations moved fluidly and effectively. This is again, thanks to the hard work of all of these people. And in a minute, Ms. Cirillo is here tonight as a representative. Mr. Abrams is not. Don't go up yet. Oh, and Mr. Abrams is here too. Okay, so let me talk about these groups a little bit. Custodians, they, not that they didn't always clean our buildings beautifully, but we had a new process called deep cleaning our schools. And they were cleaning in between classes, they were cleaning staircases, and they had a specialized cleaning when we had a positive case. They learned how to clean with jets on their backs and spray in classrooms. Again, cleaning in between classes. They had to master new protocols because there are all kinds of cleaning protocols associated with the pandemic. They were always moving furniture, whether it was furnitures into our, I'm talking about you. You could stay here. Whether they were moving furnitures into, moving our furniture into a storage pod or whether they were moving furniture around the classroom, measuring six feet and then three feet, putting up dividers, again, taking down those dividers. And they were available at all times to us too and worked plenty of weekends and evenings and worked quickly and efficiently and kept our buildings very shiny, clean and healthy. I would like to just thank now the office staff. They also, and I'm talking about right now, the principal's office. Right now, they were available morning, noon and night when we had a positive case. They were part of our contact tracing team. They would get these spreadsheets that actually, I have to say, we really helped the state develop. They would get the spreadsheets to the county. There was a certain amount of time they had to get them there. They would also call parents and be that friendly voice to explain what it meant to be a contact. And then they spent the day fielding calls from the rest of the community who was nervous and always with a friendly smile on their face. Now, I'd like to thank the business office. So we were ordering things at a moment's notice because I did not want us to be involved with this COVID shortage, shortages that people weren't getting. So we would go in, we'd ask for something. They knew how to connect with the vendors. They jumped on the orders so that they did not run out of supplies, and they managed the budget to keep our school safe and also keep us in budget. In terms of the security guards, they worked with our students and our parents on the new security configurations and the new dismissal and arrival. Our monitors too mastered new methods, new arrival and dismissal procedures, which were changed a number of times, you know, especially at Cottrell. You know, kids were sitting on spots, they were sitting here, they were sitting there. We had to make sure that kids were socially distanced, and they also did this. Our kids responded so well because they were so good at it. They were so friendly and calm. New lunchtime procedures, and again, keeping kids calm. And the TAs, again, managing classrooms with, and also the aides. They managed classrooms while teachers were either special education classrooms or while teachers were streaming into another classroom. They managed that. We are so grateful for their hard work and their dedication. So Mr. Abrams, Ms. Cirillo, please come to collect a token of our gratitude. And please also smile for a photo. Smile through your masks, do a photo.
And I too would like to thank all of the CSCE members. Now, there's so many that are in our unit that I can't stand here and thank all of them. But they really, really stepped up to the plate, and I'm very proud of all of them. And a privilege to work with teachers and the administrators. It's just been an unbelievable year that we made it to this point. It's really outstanding. I thank you, Dr. Goodman, Robin, everybody else on the board, and thank you. For softball fans, the girls won 7-4 in the first half.
Next, I would like to, and I didn't really pull out anybody singularly from the staff, but I had to pull out the school nurses and of course, our incredible school physician. First, I'll start with Dr. Calagaris. She was, you are, our medical anchor, and we needed you to understand this virus, and she was available not only to me but also to the administrators and the staff. She was always available at a moment's notice, even though she has an extremely busy practice. Dr. Calagaris always got back to us. And her knowledge about the virus and her level-headedness, I think that's what really got us through this pandemic and reopened and kept ourselves open and not overreacting. She was able to decipher research, and she was really instrumental in every phase of the reopening. We would call her up and say, what do you think about this? I might be on the phone with her and a principal, and we had a question. And again, she, with her level-headed, calm way, she would get us through it. Again, our anchor. And then our nurses. You know, we have great nurses, and nurses are very important to a school community, but this year was, they were actually a key position. They set the direction of the district in terms of reopening and contact tracing. They were available early and late at night, early in the morning, late at night, and whenever a case was found. They took leadership in terms of understanding the regulations, and they often called parents and were the bearer of bad news, but did it in a way so parents would not panic. When students were sick, they let parents know, and when they couldn't come to school, which parents did not always understand, especially at the beginning of the year, what we could allow in school and were not allowed to come to school if they had any COVID-like symptoms. They helped us navigate the guidelines so that, again, we wouldn't overreact and we didn't overly close schools because of them. And they promoted our bold reopening. And I just want to take time because I want to thank them both, both Ms. Higgins and Ms. Polis, but I would also like to give a special shout-out to Ms. Higgins specifically. Because when there was anything that came out, I could rely on her. She was always available. She really got to know the regulations inside and out, and she was a great partner in this. Again, another one who had her phone on all the time, and still does, on weekends, at night or in the morning, just helping us through this. You really, I know that you worked very closely with Linda too, who was new to our district and did a great job. So Dr. Calagaris, Ms. Polis and Ms. Higgins, please come down to collect your certificates representing our community. Next, I need to thank the Tocco Health and Wellness Committee. We relied heavily on them throughout the reopening, and I really have to say that this committee was outstanding. As you can see, just by the list of the people that we had on it, we have broad representation. In terms of the community members, we had some of the best minds in medicine. We had teaching staff that was incredibly committed. Some of you are back here because the health people, Dr. Calagaris and Ms. Higgins, were on this committee too. The community members were Dr. Thomas Angelo, Dr. Dominico Tortorella and Dr. Cucci. The Board of Ed trustees also had a medical background, science background, is Ms. Gardir and Ms. Laura Banky. The teaching staff, Ms. Abby Benedetti, Ms. Chaffee and Ms. McKinley, our nurse, Ms. Higgins and Dr. Calagaris. And again, all the district administrators pretty much were on this. All our committees were valuable, but nothing was called upon more than this committee. We relied heavily on them for the reopening. They helped us understand scientific data. They ensured the safety of our schools, ensured the safety of our students and staff, came together at a moment's notice. And even, for example, I have to say, this weekend, when we thought we had some guidelines from the state, of course, we all learned that those have changed, but we wanted to get a jumpstart on it that on Saturday afternoon, I emailed this committee, and by Sunday, we had a date to meet on Zoom on Sunday. And we are always with this committee, hashing things out, solving really nuanced issues within the state's guidance. They gave us direction to be confident in our bold plans to get our school out in front of the pandemic. We recognize the members listed on this slide here, and tonight, we are joined by Ms. Higgins, Dr. Calagaris, Mr. Marash, Dr. Linehan, Mr. Keough, Ms. Chaffee, Dr. Tortorello. Please collect your certificate from Ms. Dunn as our token of our appreciation. And Theresa and Laura. And Therese and Laura, Therese, Gardier, Laura Banky, as our board members.
Come over here, there's a lot of you.
We were so fortunate to have the people we had on this committee. There is no way that this school would have opened the way it did with our bold initiative without the people who were on this committee, and thank you all so much. We met so many times, I'll probably be calling you next week.
What do we need to do? I think you're too, you should be, you're too, you know, like, too, like, spread out and, like, the kind of ramming. But you're going to be one of those long and skinny things, right?
The PTA in Toccoho, as I've said over and over again, is extremely strong and provides so much to enhance our school district. And I've worked in many school districts, and I have to say, this is the most generous, involved, caring PTA I have ever worked with. So I, even on, even for the short time I was here, before the pandemic, I saw the things that they do, and I know next year, I'll see even more. But this year, they ended up reimagining so many events, so that our students could have these events. So virtual events, like our Halloween night at Coddle, they didn't do virtually, they did that actually in person. That was, we were one of the first to do something like that with parents outside. The other events, they did, some events they did virtually. The Halloween at Coddle was amazing. Building Bridges was amazing. Actually, these are all in-person ones. Field Day, Career Panels, that was virtual. And the Taste of Toccoho, they didn't let the fact that we were having a pandemic get them down. They actually did it just a different way, and our kids loved it. They always celebrate our teachers and support them incredibly, and they made the year very special. And when we talk about social-emotional development, them doing these things for our school is what makes our kids feel good about being in Toccoho. So Ms. Mealy is here tonight as president of the PTA. She has been a great partner to me. I really do thank you, and I know the principals do, for the wonderful work that you do. And please, on behalf of the PTA, because I know Ms. Mealy always says, it's not me, it's all of these volunteers, and I know that it is, please accept a certificate on behalf of the PTA, indicating our deep gratitude for all the PTA and your hard work this year. Thank you.
Can I just come up? Thank you. Thank you to our administrators. Thank you to our faculty, our staff. What the PTA does can't be done in isolation. We can't do what we do without all of you. And we don't really belong in the same breath as everybody else being on here tonight, but we are further indebted to you for supporting what the PTA does. And as Dr. Goodman said, we're almost sixty people on our board. So I am one person up here, but there are a lot more who make all these things possible.
So as somehow, we coined this last year, but we really are Tocco in this together. You can see by all the people here tonight. And I also want to do a few shout-outs. Special thanks to Mr. Keough, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, for all your help with all our teachers. You are the key to learning in, within this school year, and what you did was short of miraculous with all of the technology that we had to learn. I also want to, yeah, I also want to thank my administrative assistant, Ms. Robin Dunn. She is not only the board clerk, she is my administrative assistant, so she also was available at all times for everything that we needed to do this year, and I thank them both for being my partners throughout this journey. And I really want to thank the Board of Education. I really believe this is an extremely intelligent and thoughtful Board of Education. They strived also. They wanted our students in person, and that, and we served them well. And they also want to do what's best for our students. So Tocco in this together, Tocco leading the way. Finally, this quote is, "Education is not preparation for life. Education is life itself." I think we learned that this year, and I think our students learned this this year. They are strong and resilient, and in the end, we thank them. Thank you.
So let me just say, as the board president, to pony off of everything that was presented tonight, we as the board represent the community. That's why we're here. So on behalf of the community, thank you to all of you, every single one of you, because we as a community realize how lucky we are to have our kids go to this school district in this pandemic, and the way this district handled it really drove that home. And we just really want to thank you all, on behalf of the community, all of you, teachers, administrators, CSEA, PTA, everybody, just thank you. Thank you very, very much. So we do have one more award, and she doesn't know it's coming, but Dr. Goodman needs to be recognized. Everything you heard tonight, all that wonderful recap, the center of that entire wheel, the air traffic controller, the glue that held it all together, was Dr. Goodman. And I don't think anybody can deny that. Her leadership has been palpable over this past year. And I knew we were in good shape. If you remember back to when the synagogue episode broke out in Rochelle, which kind of started it all for us. Dr. Goodman saw the writing on the wall. She already saw that a lockdown was probably coming. And I think she had Mr. Marash and Mr. Kilgallen come in that weekend and start getting Chromebooks ready. She, this entire pandemic, she's been ahead of the curve. She's been one step ahead of everything, even like you mentioned before, this weekend, with the guidance coming. Always one step ahead, always calm, always calculated, always thinking everything through, just a steady hand. And I think what she demonstrated tonight, was probably her biggest strength, is she knows how to tap into all the resources. She knows how to get all the talent that we have and get it in the right direction. That's true leadership. So on behalf of the Board of Education. Can't believe the end is here already. It's crazy, a long year. All right, we can move on. All right, we do have a little bit of business, not a whole lot, but a little bit, so we'll get right into that. First is to, a motion to approve the consent agenda, items two through 10. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Therese, any discussion? All in favor? Now, business of the board. Approve a bond resolution. Motion to approve the bond resolution as attached to the official agenda in minutes of this meeting. This, of course, is the bond resolution of the capital improvement bond that was voted on last month. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Cynthia, any discussion? Thank you again to our community for supporting this bond. We're really excited about it. All in favor? Approve a MOA. Whereas negotiations have been ongoing between the bargaining team for the Toccoho Union Free School District and the bargaining team for the Toccoho Teachers Association for successor to the 2018-2020 agreement between the parties, and whereas those negotiations have resulted in a tentative agreement contained in the memorandum of agreement dated March, I'm sorry, May 27, 2021, which has been ratified by the membership of the unit, and whereas the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District has reviewed the terms of the memorandum of agreement and finds that a settlement consistent with the terms contained therein is in the best interest of the district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District hereby approves and ratifies the terms of the aforementioned memorandum of agreement, and hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools and the board president to execute a collective bargaining agreement consistent with the terms thereof. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Cynthia, all in favor?
Congratulations to the teachers. Again, what I said up there was, I could have, again, added pages and pages. It's a great staff, and you deserve what you got, so thank you.
And with regards to this contract, too, this was, you know, the original term was truncated as a result of the pandemic, and the teachers' cooperation in doing that was commendable, it really was, because we just were unsure where this was, where we were going to go financially, and you were willing to be patient and wait with us, so we appreciate that. Thank you. All right, and last, personnel recommendations. Resolved, the Board of Education of Toccoho Union Free School District approves personnel actions A through B as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Laurie, second. Cynthia, any discussion? All in favor? All right, and that's it. We just did the end. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Therese, second. Cynthia, all in favor? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you all coming out tonight. Thank you.